Meet in regular session on Tuesday, May twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty, at nine oh five AM via online Zoom. With three members present. Nan and I are going to do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of Wichita.
One nation.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Notice to the public, Board of Supervisors welcomes comments from the public during the time allowed for discussion. The normal process on any agenda items for the chairperson to read the item from the agenda. The board is given an opportunity to comment on the issue and or place a motion on the floor. Opportunity for discussion may be presented at which time the public may participate and roll call vote will follow. Number one, approval or amendment of the agenda.
Mister Chairman, I motion that we approve the agenda as printed.
Can you hear me? Yes, sir, we can.
Okay, my, um, I second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as printed. Roll call vote.
Thompson?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Salasit?
Yes. Approval of the agenda has passed. Consent agenda. Number two, approve minutes from regular session of May twelfth, two thousand and twenty. Number three, accept manure management plan update from Burt Farm and Livestock Company. Tom Butters, site ID number five nine nine two seven. Annual update report received and placed on file, no changes to the manure management plan. Number four, accept the manure management plan update from Jared Whitaker, ID number seven zero one six three. Annual update report received and placed on file with no changes to the manure management plan. Number five, accept manure management plan update. MTM Farms, ID number six one zero one zero. Annual update report received and placed on file with no changes to the manure management plan. Number six, approve claims. Approve claims is audited and authorized the county auditor recorded to issue payment of the same. The listing of claims paid at this meeting and all claims paid in the month of May will be published as part of the meet, first meeting in June.
Mister Chairman, I would move to approve the consent agenda as printed.
Mister Chairman, I would second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as printed. Roll call vote.
Thompson?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Salasit?
Yes. Motion passes. Resolution number two thousand and twenty dash zero zero two zero. Number seven, reappropriation of funds for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty. Pursuant to section three thirty-one dot four thirty-four subsection six code of Iowa. As long as each class of proposed expenditures contained in the budget summary is not increased, a reappropriation of funds can be done when expenditures may exceed the current appropriation. A change in appropriations between the zoning and weed eradication departments in the amount of one thousand is necessary for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty.
Mister Chairman, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Dave.
There's a time lag, so I was just gonna make a motion.
I'll do a quick, uh, rundown here of what's happening. Uh, we're reducing the number nine, uh, line item zoning by a thousand dollars and adding a thousand dollars to line number twenty-four, which is reed eradication. So, uh, pretty straightforward.
And good morning, this is Mary Stubbs. I need to make one other small adjustment. Between number forty harvester tip and number forty-two gateway tip. An adjustment of two hundred dollars.
Which one goes up and down?
Harvester tip goes down, gateway goes up.
Mary, is this the last year for the harvester tip?
That the harvester tip has been done. This is not the last year, maybe last year was. Um, this was the expenditures of the low to moderate income housing for the Green Mountain sewer project.
I understand. Mister Chairman, I would motion to adopt resolution number two thousand and twenty dash zero zero two zero. Reappropriation of funds for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty.
Mister Chairman, I'd second that.
Moved and seconded to adopt resolution two thousand and twenty dash zero zero two zero, reappropriation of funds for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty. Roll call vote.
Thompson?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Salasit?
Yes. Motion passes. Number eight. Two oh six West State Street building proposals. Ben Brackett, Ferguson Commercial Real Estate Services will be presenting building proposal information. For two oh six West State Street, Marshalltown, Iowa. Ben, are you with us? Yes, you are. Look at there.
Hi there, how you doing?
Doing good.
Great. Um, I, uh, I expect that you got our proposals. We've, you know, we've put together three different options, kind of like we talked about. Um, did you all have a chance to review them? Or do we want to pull them up? Or how do we want to do that?
Steve, I was not able to bring any of these items up while I was up at the cabin. I didn't have any bandwidth. So I have had not had the opportunity to go over these.
Maybe brought up then, is someone able to do that?
I didn't receive them, so. Um, I don't know if Lisa has them.
I haven't seen them either.
Yeah, I mean, I sent them, I sent them to Lisa. Lisa, did you get them? I can resend them real quick right now.
Otherwise, Ben, if you want on your side, if you've got them, uh, we can have you do the screen share if you want.
Yeah, yeah, let me, it, I'm just gotta.
Yeah, they were, they were set. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, yes.
Right. They were put in your packet. Uh, and sent to Friday. In your board packet.
Okay, that's, that's my mistake. I didn't look at the board packet, uh, that.
I under, I understand they were in our packet on Friday, but I didn't have any service.
Yeah, I, I got them.
Yeah, and I can pull them up and share my screen. I just, I had them originally pulled up on my, on my other computer, just so, so one second, please. Okay, let's see. If this doesn't work, I can just review it with you guys verbally. It's not overly complicated.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, Ben.
Are you able to see my screen?
I read, I read, yeah, okay.
Are you able to read and ask, are you able to see it here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, so basically, you guys had initially asked for a six-month proposal. So that's not the one we're looking at here. We, we put together a six-month proposal, a one-year proposal, and then a five-year proposal, like we had sort of intended to. Um, you know, and we sort of feel like they, obviously, we're a little more aggressive and hopefully, um, you know, trying to, uh, you know, show you what we're willing to do for the five-year deal. You know, we sort of feel like for a six-month deal, um, you know, that's just sort of pushing us off a little bit and, um, yeah, I mean, I, I know Bill Elson's on the call as well. He and I talked a little bit beforehand and, um, we feel like these are three decent options. Um, and obviously, we're, we're more inclined to push for the longer-term option. Um, you know, we also did a little research on workforce development that has just recently relocated from our building and they were, they're finding, they found a deal where they're paying, they're paying more than they work with us because it fits their use and their needs better. But they're paying ten dollars and fifteen cents a square foot. And then they're also paying for their improvements, which were, um, over three dollars and fifty cents a square foot, under four dollars. I, I can't recall right off the top of my head. I can pull that up, but, um, so we feel our, our, our options, even in the, you know, the six-month deal, the one-year deal, and then especially the five-year deal, we feel like we're being very aggressive, you know, not only on the improvements, but also on the rate.
Ben, can you, can you verbally tell us, uh, again, what the six-month, one-year, and five-year rates would be?
Yeah, so.
I'm at a little, the reason I ask is I'm at a disadvantage here. For some reason, um, my, uh, my computer, uh, dumped me, so I'm back on this cell phone. So if you could help, help me out on that, I appreciate it.
Yeah, that's no problem. Uh, so the, the six-month lease that we're offering, um, was for nine dollars and sixty-four cents a square foot, so it's an increase in your rent and no improvement. For one year, for a one-year lease, we would do eight dollars and seventy-five cents a square foot. Um, that would include an update of the kitchenette and the restrooms. And then our five-year lease is an escalating rent that stays, that starts out where you guys are currently, which is eight dollars and twenty cents. Um, and it escalates over the five years, tops out at nine dollars, but averages that eight dollars and seventy-five cents a square foot. And that would be, that would include the full six-figure renovation that was carpet paint, you know, so on and so forth. See if I can.
Uh, my inclination.
What is our square foot?
Go ahead, I'll talk to you. Paying eight dollars and twenty cents a square foot.
And for six months, you want to go to while many?
Nine dollars and sixty-four cents.
I personally would not be willing to pay any more rent because of the improvements that we had a verbal agreement with the previous owner of the building that has not been honored. That agreement should have carried forward during the purchase of the property and was not. I would propose a six-month extension at our current terms.
Are you the only one with feedback?
Uh, the only thing I'm concerned about here, David, is, uh, um, is the six months. Is that, uh, going to adequately get us done in whatever we need to do on the other end here?
Is Lucas available?
Yes, Lucas is here.
We'll be opening the bids here, what, ten days?
Uh, seventeenth of June, we'll open bids, yes.
Lucas, so is your intent, you're opening bids for your, the renovation of it, was it the annex building? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And so are you guys a hundred percent full steam ahead, planning to move out upon completing those bids and getting that to work?
I, I think a lot of it depends on, uh, what the bids come in at, you know, if they're, if they're really high, uh, I guess we can't commit to them a hundred percent.
No explanation provided, you just sit on it.
I'm not so sure going forward that DHS isn't going to have a substantially different way of conducting their business with people working from home.
Is there a possibility that space could end up being halved for what their real needs?
I, I think we're going to see a considerably large amount of that with our state offices. And I would be very hesitant at this time to go with too much of an extension or a commitment. If you guys would be more, more comfortable, why don't we propose an eight-month extension?
So, no plates then? No plates then?
You need the title first. We have to, we have to sit on the information for twenty-four, four hours for them to start to process it.
I haven't had an opportunity to speak to, uh, any of the individuals from DHS. Have the other two supervisors had that opportunity?
That's what they do.
I have not.
Why can't they just process it?
I would either be hesitant to extend it longer than that, or I'd be willing to maybe table this for two weeks until we get an opportunity to discuss with the people from DHS what their, what their current and future needs are going to be and act appropriately.
Well, I mean, that's where we got all our information that we're working from, talking.
I understand that, but it's our, our duty to do our due diligence and get that information ourselves.
Okay, so, so then you had to stop that work then over the next couple of weeks? Because obviously, we've been trying to put something together now. I mean, obviously, it's been over a year since we've been trying to put something together with you guys and working pretty hard to do so.
I understand. We've asked for a signed contract for over a year and have not received it either.
Okay.
Well, what are your thoughts then, Bill? Should we put this off for two weeks then and do some homework on our end?
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm not real, real, um, um, good with the six months for a couple of reasons. Um, uh, one, that's fairly high for someone who's been renting it for a long time. And, um, uh, I'm not sure six months is long enough for us. And, um, I'm, in fact, I'm not sure eight months is, but, um, uh, if we can, uh, go for another two weeks with, with a, uh, make that an absolute date for Ben, so he, he knows we're not going to do it again. But, uh, in two weeks, uh, we would have, um, have our act here together.
Bill, would you be more comfortable postponing this until after we've had an opportunity to open the bids?
Uh, is that, that would be the, the, the best thing to do.
Then, then you totally will have all the information you need to make a proper decision.
When you say opening the bid, does that just mean like putting them out to bid? Because generally.
No, they've already.
Okay, so you'll be accepting, you'll be receiving the bid?
We're receiving bids, um.
Receiving and opening.
In three.
Got it.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth. The seventeenth of, uh, June, we open bids. And then I think the plan would be to accept a bid at the next board meeting, I think it's the sixth, uh, the twenty-third, unless we do a special session before.
So that'd be putting Ben off for a month then.
It would.
Ben, can you live with that, or is that unacceptable?
Well, I mean, I, I don't know that we have a, um, much of a choice. I mean, we, we want to figure out what's going on with you guys, obviously, and if that, if that gives you a better, you know, puts you in a better place to make a decision. Um, you know, I'm trying to, you know, generally, like, I guess my only other concern is just, you know, that we're just going to, you know, it's essentially like a holdover situation, you know, and that's why we've, you know, at the six-month lease, you know, we've gone for a higher rent because it's, you know, it's essentially a holdover situation. You know, a lot of times leases will have, um, you know, clauses where you're paying a hundred and fifty percent or two hundred percent of your rent if you hold over. So we're just trying to get to a point where we've got something in place and, you know, we can obviously make some decisions. Um, you know, if you guys are going away, and that's a, it's a big chunk of space that we've got to fill.
Well, if you can live with this, then, uh, give us this month, then. Give us, uh,
Four weeks.
Four weeks at this point, and, uh, we'll, we'll come up with something solid for you.
How about, how about one week after we open the bids?
Have a special meeting?
We can do a special session because we'll be in between board dates.
I'd be happy to do that if, uh, that's acceptable.
The next, the Tuesday following is when the next meeting is the twenty-third.
Okay.
So there wouldn't be much to gain then by doing a special meeting?
Let's just, let's just do it on the twenty-third, and that'll give everybody to have all the facts at hand, and we can make the best decision.
All right, very good. Ben, appreciate your patience on this, and, um, we'll, uh, come up with something solid for you at that time.
Mister Chairman, I would like to table this matter until the meeting of the twenty-third of June.
I'll second that.
Yeah, and I would only ask if you guys come up with anything in the meantime that you, you know, if you're looking for more information, or if you just have to sharpen our pencils on anything.
Absolutely, we'll keep in contact.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Roll call vote on this. All right, if there's no other discussion, then we'll do a roll call vote.
Roll call vote on the tabling for Thompson?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Salasit?
Yes. Tabling passes. We're going to move on to number nine. Sheriff's Department Extension to Twenty-eighty Agreement Between Marshall County and the City of Liston for Law Enforcement Protection. Discussion and possible action on the extension agreement regarding the Twenty-eighty Agreement between Marshall County and the City of Liston for Law Enforcement Protection within the corporate limits of the City of Liston. Agreement is effective July one, two thousand and twenty, June to June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-one. The City of Liston agrees to pay Marshall County the sum of seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Mister Chairman, I would move to approve the extension to, uh, Twenty-eighty Agreement between Marshall County and the City of Liston effective July one, two thousand and twentieth through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. The City of Liston agrees to pay Marshall County the sum of seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Mister Chairman, I will second that.
Moved and seconded to, uh, have the City of Liston pay Marshall County the sum of seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars. Uh, is there any other discussion?
No, sir.
Roll call vote.
Thompson?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Salasit?
Yes. Motion passes. Number ten. Sheriff's Department Extension to Twenty-eighty Agreement Between Marshall County and the City of Ferguson for Law Enforcement Protection. Discussion and possible action on the extension agreement regarding the Twenty-eighty Agreement between Marshall County and the City of Ferguson for Law Enforcement Protection within the corporate limits of the City of Ferguson. Agreement is effective July one, two thousand and twenty to June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-one. The City of Ferguson agrees to pay Marshall County the sum of three thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Mister Chairman, I would motion to approve the extension to the Twenty-eighty Agreement between Marshall County and the City of Ferguson, effective July first, two thousand and twenty, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. The City of Ferguson agrees to pay Marshall County the sum of three thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Mister Chairman, I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the extension to the Twenty-eighty Agreement between Marshall County and the City of Ferguson. If there's no other discussion, roll call vote.
Thompson?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Salasit?
Yes. Motion passes. Number eleven, Addendum to Marshall County, Iowa Infectious Disease Action Plan COVID-nineteen Pandemic Policy. Discussion and possible action to add an addendum to the Marshall County, Iowa Infectious Disease Action Plan COVID-nineteen Pandemic Policy to update restrictions on out-of-state travel. I would open this for discussion.
Okay, I emailed you all the, um, addendum that I, um, kind of drafted, basically, um, previously we had in our policy, any, um, actually, any travel outside of a fifty-mile radius of Marshall County, um, folks needed to be quarantined for fourteen days. And, um, you know, with the beginning of us starting to lift some of the restrictions, there, um, have been a couple cases coming to my attention where folks are maybe traveling to family out of state, they're traveling by car, not by airplane. Um, maybe to medical appointments, um, to surrounding states, Omaha, um, Mayo Clinic, that type of thing. Again, with that type of travel where you're not staying, you know, hotel, hotels kind of present a, um, interesting little twist to things, but basically, um, the department head and, um, probably in conjunction with myself, kind of began looking at travel on a case-by-case basis for employees, whether that's personal travel or work travel.
You know, our current policy, if we go out of state, for county business, involves approval by the auditor recorder. Why don't we, and the board, why don't we just update this so that any out-of-state travel gets approved between you and the department head and not necessarily have to have board action? Um, and just determine, you know, A, the reason, B, if they're going to be in any large gatherings, and what, what type of area they're going to, and just handle it on a case-by-case basis with your best judgment and the best judgment of the department head.
And that's kind of what this document talks about. We, I, I kind of gave four different options for if somebody travels. One is to continue the fourteen-day quarantine. So if somebody, you know, I guess, traveled to a resort in Mexico by airplane, you know, I see that as different than somebody that travels to Mayo Clinic, um, for overnight trip, or maybe even just a day trip and drives back home. So there, that's just, I've given you two extremes, but basically, I've given four options. One is to continue the fourteen-day quarantine. If the job is able, they can work remotely. Um, to ask the employee to self-monitor or department head monitor for illness, um, kind of on an ongoing basis, which may include, um, my third bullet was to wear a mask for fourteen days while at work. And also, um, just kind of a reminder, anybody that is sick, we don't want you to come to work if you think you've got anything. Please stay at home until you figure it out. I know a lot of folks are dealing with some allergies right now, so if you figure out it's allergies, obviously, that's not contagious. And then I did leave a fourth bullet point that just says other is deemed appropriate by department head and auditor recorder. So maybe it's a combination of the two of, you know, doing the temperature thing. I, we've got more thermometers around, so the taking the temp is a little bit easier for folks.
Is there any other discussion then, uh, gentlemen?
Well, I obviously, uh, concur with, if someone needs to go to, uh, the doctor in Mayo or something like that, um, we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be making constraints on this end to make it harder. So, um, of the, of the four. of the, of the four, of the four possibilities you've got here, you were saying we could put a couple together and make it, make it more reasonable. Is that what I, what I heard?
Basically, I kind of gave four options there and any of the one could be chosen. You know, maybe we want to say that the person does the self-monitoring of the temperature each day when they come into work and they wear a mask. You know, maybe we want to say those two things, that they do that for two weeks.
Nan, do you have a preference?
For me, it's going to be on a case-by-case basis, just like you said, Dave. It's going to depend on what they're doing.
And I agree with that. Whatever the options, because I don't have them on my tablet in front of me, gives you the ability to use common sense on a case-by-case basis along with the department head. That would be the option that I would be for.
Okay, that's what, that's the way I wrote the policy was basically leaving, giving us the department head and myself a lot of options. I foresee a lot of times the department head coming to me with the recommendation and it's good to go, but it's just another person to kind of cover us for the liability of all the COVID stuff as well here at the county.
Yeah, Nan, I'm, I'm in favor of the case-by-case basis because this, this whole situation can get better or worse. It's, it's, it's going to be full of flux for some time and that gives you the opportunity here and the, and the department head to, to manage it as things, as things either loosen up or things get tighter. So I, I would, I would go along with the case-by-case.
And you know, if, if it does happen to get worse later, we can always revert to a more restrictive policy at that time. I think it's important for us right now to remain extremely flexible.
Dave, do you want to make that as a motion then?
I will make that as a motion to authorize the auditor recorder along with the department heads to monitor this situation, you know, based upon the reason and where they're going as to what level of monitoring needs to be done before they return to work.
Mr. Chairman, I'd second that.
All right, Dave's motion has been moved and seconded. If there's no other discussion, roll call vote.
Thompson?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Selassie?
Yes. Motion passes. Number 12. Resolution number 2020-2021. Not to Exceed 2.999999 million general obligation capital loan notes. A resolution fixing date and time for a public meeting on the proposition to authorize a loan agreement and the issuance of notes to, to evidence the obligations of Marshall County, Iowa.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to adopt Resolution 2020-2021 to fix the time and the date of a public hearing not to exceed $2,999,999. General obligation capital loan notes for Tuesday, June 9, 2020, at 9:05 a.m., online at the following link.
And the, the purpose of this is to carry us through in a cash flow situation in, in the event that we need it because we're waiting on insurance reimbursement?
Yes, this is for the line of credit for insurance on the ordinance and law code items.
Okay, I just want to be specific and clear on that, that this is, our intent here is not a long-term capital loan, but this is to get us through the, the line of credit during the reconstruction process.
That was my understanding also.
Okay, based on that, I would second Bill's motion to adopt this resolution.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this resolution number 2020-2021. Roll call vote.
Thompson?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Selassie?
Yes. Motion passes. Number 13. Marshall County Personnel Policy Manual. Approval of Personnel Policy Revisions. Discussion and Possible Action to Approve Revisions to the Marshall County Personnel Policy. Nan, can you walk this, walk through this with us?
Yes. The document I sent, I did something a little different in that I left it in the marked-up version so you could see all the changes that were in red on this document. But basically, I'm just going to kind of, there was a few dates that were changed kind of at the beginning of the document. And then I'm just going to kind of flip through, so the, in the meat of it, the first change happens for this, I apologize. It begins in section 4.4 on longevity pay. And all of these changes are being done on the non-union, you know, on our personal policy, which is for our non-union employees to coincide with the changes we made on the union agreement. So it shows here that longevity pay will end June 30. It will go away and we will make a one-time cents per hour adjustment to employees to give them their current level of their longevity pay. So whatever level they're at right at that time is the amount of cents per hour they're getting. Now, I will tell you, there was a lot of rounding in that. So the employees are getting a few dollars extra just because I can't give them 5.67 cents per hour. It was rounded up to six cents per hour. So that's one of the first, that's the first change there. And please note, there'll be no further adjustments to long-term longevity pay. This, wherever they're at, at June 30 is the amount they get. They, they're at level five years, they don't ever go up. They just, that's where they're at. It's just kind of that one-time adjustment. Then we go to section 5.35 Sick Leave on page 46. We're changing the sick leave so that employees accumulate eight hours per month with a maximum of 360 hours. For the sick leave payout on page 48, they will receive 50% of their sick leave when they retire. This is for the retirement payout to a maximum of 110 hours. And this payout will be paid into the employee's RDS FHRA account. So the retiree health, health, retire, reimbursement account. For sick leave conversion, the current sick leave conversion currently, if an employee is maxed out on their sick leave, they can take 10 hours of their sick leave and they get one hour of leave for sick leave conversion. The change to that is going to be effective July 1. That will end after the initial amount going in each November and then March and July, so three times a year, so every four months. Any amount in excess of 360 hours of sick leave, that excess amount will be taken times 25% and then will be taken times their currently hourly rate and paid into the retiree HRA account. So every four months. So if somebody has, if they have all 32 hours, so previously, if they had all 32 hours, they would have gotten 3.2 hours of income. Now they're going to be getting eight hours of their current hourly rate paid into the HRA account. Okay, on page 61, 62, we added a section for disability.
Excuse me, excuse me, Nan, you're going to have to give us the actual 5.4 or 6.2. We don't have page numbers.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, did you get that last one where lung, where sick leave was?
Yes.
5.4 is there, okay. And okay, so then we're, I'm creating a new section there. At the end of the sixes, I'm creating a section after 6.4, continuation of group health insurance, I'm making a new section called disability. And this section should have existed there before because we previously had long-term disability that began after 22 weeks, so on the 181st day to be exact, long-term disability begins. But we did not have this, we had missed this in our policy before. So I've added two sections, a 6.5 dot 1 to add the short-term disability begins after 31-day waiting period. And this is for any non-work-related illness or injury. They will receive 60% of their pay not to exceed $1,000. And then a discussion about the gross-up. If the employee signs what's called a gross-up form, they will receive that 60% of their short-term disability pay on a non-tax basis. So they will get all 60% of that pay. And then, like I said, I added 6.5 dot 2 for the long-term disability benefit. Then in section seven on retiree, I added at the end of that a 7.4, which is the retiree-funded health reimbursement account, which talks about effective July 1. Employees that have sick leave in excess of 360 hours, the county will transfer that excess of 360 hours times 45% times their July 1 hourly rate will be transferred into the retiree-funded health reimbursement account. This is a tax-free event to the employees, so 100% of the funds are going into that account. It is a it's, it, the employees will be allowed to invest it. It will go into a mutual fund-type investment. It'll be individual to the employees. And then it will be used to pay for any health expenses similar to the flexible spending account, and that's under the IRS Section Code 213D. Additionally, besides just your regular co-pays and things like that, which is what's outlined in 213D, employees can also fund any COBRA premiums for medical, dental, vision, long-term care, Medicare Part B, D, or supplemental coverage. The important thing to note here, this health reimbursement account cannot be used by the employee until they separate, they're no longer an employee at Marshall County, or they've retired from Marshall County. That is the end of the change that we're in. We're in the personnel policy.
Nan, this is Bill. Just a, just a quick editing thing. Back on 5.1 vacation, there's, there's two columns there, years of service. The second column is vacation hours earned per work year. That's confusing. The numbers run together. If you can, when you're, when this is redone, to slide that column of vacation hours over a tab or two, it'll separate them out.
I can do that, yes.
Thank you.
That would probably be more readable.
Based upon that correction by Bill or clarification, I would motion to approve the Marshall County Personnel Policy Revisions effective today, or Nan, do you want it today or do you want it at a different date?
I think we make it today because then I can begin really communicating with all of our non-union employees this change because we've got the dates in there of July 1.
Then let my motion reflect that it be effective today, May 26, 2020.
Mr. Chairman, I'd second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Marshall County Personnel Policy Revisions effective May 26 of 2020. Is there any other discussion?
Nan, this is Lisa. I have a question.
Yes.
Will there be a time where this will be explained to the employees? Even a one-on-one, so it can be figured out with each employee where, what those dollars are?
Yes, my plan is to send a memo out now that this is approved to all employees and set up meetings with each department so that I can meet with smaller groups of folks. And then if the employees want to meet one-on-one, we can do that. I mean, we can't give the exact dollar amount right now because people are continuing to time and they're continuing to take it.
No, I understand.
But yes, that's, that's my plan for communication. And then meetings with each department. I'll contact the department heads and whoever wants to contact them.
Is there any other discussion at this point?
No, sir.
All right, roll call vote.
Thompson?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Selassie?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, before we go on to our next item, I'd just like to give everybody a heads up. I just received a text that DHS will be working more from home in the future. Ben Brackett, if you're still on, I have that information. If not, I think we should maybe give Ben a heads up in an email that that's what we've been notified of, but we need to talk to DHS first.
Yeah, I agree.
Lucas and I will get with Vicki because, you know, it's going to depend, you know, which people she's thinking, you know, what that's going to look like. So we're going to need to know for layout purposes to know what that's going to look like. But obviously, you all can talk to her as well. But Lucas and I will put that on our to-do list.
All right, very good. We'll go on to number 14. Discussion on Reopening the County. Discussion and Possible Action on Steps to Reopen County Offices for Business.
Okay, I've talked to a couple department heads and Jared would really like to be open by appointment by June 2, just with the timing of his property tax payments, which that is prior to our next meeting. So I talked to Mary Lee a bit and, and basically, this is kind of the, I talked to the folks in the bank. Now, one of the stipulations for us when we talk about completely reopening, we have to wait at the bank until the bank reopens. So we've kind of got that hold. And when I talked to Alice on Thursday or Friday last week, they'd really gotten no indication yet. Now, I think I heard that Wells Fargo out by the mall might be, the lobby may be open for business. But I don't bank there, so I'm not personally, does anyone know of any other Marshalltown banks that are open at this point?
This is, this is Jared the Treasurer. No, no other lobbies are open that I'm aware of yet of all the ones I go to. So I guess we'll wait and see on that. As for us doing appointments, even if, if the building's not prepared, we won't have people come up here to do appointments. But if we are requested to do appointments based on the deadline starting back up in both motor vehicle and, and property tax, we'll just arrange a just arrange appointments to meet people at the door, most of it will be a quick transaction of handing us paper, us processing and, and us handing it back to them, so I'm, we aren't necessarily needing the place to be opened up for people to get up in here, we just need to be able to do appointments if necessary at the door.
Is that anything that we're doing right now?
Yeah, because right now, we're not allowing anybody in.
Okay.
I know my office would like to begin processing marriage licenses on an appointment basis, so that would be bringing three people up.
Honestly, I, I would motion that we allow you and, and the auditor recorder and the treasurer, the discretion of doing that effective immediately.
Well, I know my folks doing marriage licenses would greatly appreciate that, because they usually mail things back and forth two to four or five times, and, just to get it right, so it, it would aid the process there for folks in my office, and just gives us that flexibility. I know I will wait until we have the protective Plexiglas up, I think Lucas and his team is planning on getting that up sometime this week, so that gives my department a little time to begin setting up appointments and planning for that.
You know, in the meantime, I think I'm gonna motion that we allow the auditor recorder and the treasurer to handle any appointments as they deem necessary effective immediately.
What does that mean, David, what are you doing?
Well, it's gonna give both the auditor and recorder the ability to make an appointment, to take care of the handing back and forth of paperwork for a marriage application, or in Jared's case, if somebody wanted to, and this is totally at their discretion, but it gives them the ability to open it up before June second if necessary, and, and, you know, for something for motor vehicle or for that, we're not gonna allow people into the building, but at least they can come into the doors downstairs and be met by a human being, rather than just using a drop box.
Well, and in our case, for the marriage licenses, we probably would, we'd have to obviously unlock the doors, because the bank is locked, and we would be escorting the three people, because you've got to have both parties getting married, plus a witness, so that's why it's three people, but, yes, the bank, I, I did talk to the bank about that, okay, they are okay with that, they're doing that now for home loans, they have to, you know, do that signing person, it's just easier, so they have a room that they're using. I will not start that right away, obviously, we've got to get some of that safe, you know, get the Plexiglas up, get a, kind of a process down for after they come in.
And I understand that, I'm just giving you the option that if everything is rocking and rolling and ready to go, that you do have that ability.
Yes, and that would, yeah, that would be, so basically, we can open by appointment those two offices at this time?
My, my intent is to give both the auditor and recorder and the treasurer as much latitude as possible in running their operations effectively.
Yeah, I, I understand that, David, and I don't disagree with you, but everyone's getting real antsy about getting out and doing things, Marshall County is not getting any better, unless something come out in the paper today, but it's, it's, it's still, it's still not a good deal for Marshall County. But I understand what you're doing, the way you have explained it, I'll second it, David.
It's been moved and seconded, then, for a little more discussion here, how does the engineer's office fit into this, are we including them or excluding them at this point?
I should say, is Paul on the call?
He's muted.
Paul is muted.
I would also leave that at his discretion, but, you know, Paul is under the direction of the Board of Supervisors, so that's something that he can call the board, and, and, as far as I'm personally concerned, I would trust Paul to be able to use his discretion along with his office staff, no different than the auditor recorder.
And let's talk about the Conservation Office, then, can you hear us?
Okay, there we go, I just unmuted.
Now we can hear you.
Yeah, the Conservation Center is considered a museum, the governor, I believe, last week lifted the directions that museums can open, our problem is sanitizing properly in an efficient way, so if we open up for use for street traffic to come in and visit the Conservation Center for looking at displays, that leaves the option of restrooms availability or not, which again, is, is a problem on our end for, for time constraints, for, for cleaning schedule properly, so until I have a, a plan or direction to do that, we're gonna remain closed.
Why don't we just leave it as right now, the engineer, auditor, recorder, and treasurer?
All right, very good. If there's no other discussion, or is there other discussion?
Hey, Steve, this is Jared again, and, and just for clarification, for especially the media out there, with this going forward, we'll just, our appointments, we're not gonna bring anyone up to the office at, at any date that we're comfortable with, we will just do appointments to meet people at the door, just because the building is not prepared with the Plexiglas, we don't have the flow for correct social distancing, distancing down yet, so for our customers, we'll, we'll be incrementally increasing the appointment meeting at the door.
Okay, and, and Mary Lee just sent me a message and said, the assessor's office is not needing any public, you know, appointments at this time.
And I just wanted to let you guys know, where, you know, with the engineer's office, we haven't had any trouble getting the, you know, the, the things, so for our public customers that come in, they're, they're fairly limited at this point anyway, other than just some driveway work, and, and things are being, things are working okay, so we don't really have any reason that we need to accelerate faster than, than any other department.
Okay, thank you, Paul. If there's no other discussion, we will have a roll call vote.
Okay, I'm going to read the motion back, since we kind of amended it, so motion by Dave, second by Bill, to allow auditor, recorder, engineer, and treasurer open by appointment only, effective immediately. So Thompson?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Slusick?
Yes. Motion passes. All right, number fifteen, Lisa, are you still with us?
She is, she's muted, she'll get unmuted.
Hang on, here I am.
Hey, we heard you, we can hear you loud and clear, Lisa, you have been the go-to on the census here in Marshall County, I would like you to take this opportunity to, to read this, and share with us what, what you know and what needs to happen yet in Marshall County.
You bet, this, this addition to the agenda actually came as an idea from Lucas, and I ran with it, because it's a super way to let people know out there where we are with the census, and what I've included on the agenda is basically the, the contact information, if you've not filled your census out, where you can go online to do that, what number, phone number you can call to complete the census over the phone, and then basically just throw a few examples out as to where we were as of last Thursday, when the, or Friday, when the agenda went out, where we're at in the local communities as far as a percentage of those people who have completed their census. And I don't need to reach each one, but you can kind of look down there and see, you know, with all of our small towns and Marshall Town, where we're at in terms of getting those self-response census, censuses completed, and what I'd like to do each public meeting is actually give the new updated information as far as the percentage completed, as well as, you know, the change from our previous, so we can just kind of, as we go along here, those numbers will continue to go up, and we'll be able to see that in this little table I have.
It looks like a great idea, Lisa, putting that together.
Yeah, we, we are, we are in great shape, in two thousand and ten, we actually had a seventy-three percent self-response, and what that means is seventy-three percent of our, our county self-responded, whether it, of course, now it's via online, phone, or mail, we are at, you know, we are in our sixty-plus percent at this point already, and we've only been at this two months, so we're, you know, we're like way ahead of curve from where we were ten years ago, and I'm sure a lot of that has to do with the ease that they've made it to be able to complete the census online, or by phone, so...
Technology's come a long way in ten years.
A long way, a long way, and of course, you know, the goal is a hundred percent, you know, but if we can at least go higher than that seventy-three percent ten years ago, we would all be happy in self-response.
I never thought I'd be doing a board meeting from a parking lot underneath a cell tower inside of my truck.
Yeah, so this is just an extra way for us to get the word out there every couple of weeks, and let people know where we're at in our, in our response with all of our little towns.
I see, I noticed there was a great article in Marshall Town Times Republican this weekend, and I hope, I hope that makes, makes, makes people aware of what needs to happen here, so, whatever you done, whatever you've done on this, thank you very much, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Number sixteen, public forum, the Times said aside for the public to make comments on topics of county business, other than those listed on this agenda, no action will be taken on any, any of these topics brought up in the public forum.
I wanted, this Nan, and I wanted to share just a reminder to everybody, the primary election is a week from today, on June second, and if anyone has any questions about where they vote or anything, our election office is set up at the old fire station, so people can stop in there, or they can call our election line at seven five four sixty-three oh two.
Thank you, Nan, is there any other, anyone else would like to visit here during the public forum? Well, if none, we'll move on to adjournment, the next regular session is June ninth, twenty-twenty, at nine oh five AM, all business to be acted upon at that session should be submitted to the county auditors and recorders office, or the board of supervisors office by Thursday, June four, at one o'clock PM, there being no further business to come before the board, the meeting is adjourned at ten eleven AM. Thank you all for participating.
Thank you.